You know.
Well, I've had my daughter right by the neck, don't you think? I'm gonna tell you what, she was at a party up in Andover, there was probably two hundred people there. And I was, I found her. And I went in there, and I'm gonna tell you right now, you could have heard a pin drop. And there weren't nobody said a thing.
We're live, by the way, we're now on.
We're gonna start this meeting now. That's okay.
It just happened, so.
Um, all right. This is, um, April twentieth, two thousand twenty-three, this is the meeting of the Webster Planning Board. Let's take attendance first, and we'll start over here with, uh, Paul.
Paul King, present.
Adam Mark.
Marla Harris.
Craig Fournier.
Susan Youngs.
Russell Pedro.
Okay, we have a quorum here. Uh, Teresa's absent, she's our alternate. Um.
Tell you, six thirty sneaks up on ya.
That it does.
Speak of the devil.
Hey, well, the attendance.
I was just saying how six thirty sneaks up on ya. Yeah.
My car is sounding funny, somebody get my truck.
Oh, no, that's.
Russell, did I have enough of those?
Really?
Yeah, for the board, I don't know.
Just now, or?
Not physically, it's, um, somebody's messed with my.
Oh, some big mess.
Somebody messed with my truck. Are we on?
Yes.
Yeah. Well, thank you for coming today.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Um, we just took attendance, so, um, you're here.
I'm here, Teresa Finnemore.
And, um, the first, uh, third item on the agenda is, um, annual reorganization.
Didn't you ask to say you wanna make sure we had a chairperson?
Yeah, that's right.
That's what it is.
Okay, I just wanna make sure we're on the same page.
We are.
So every, every April, we have to choose a new chairman. Last year, we kind of let it slip, and it didn't go till July, I think, but, uh, it's time to elect a new chairman. Anybody have thoughts?
Yeah, Craig.
I've proposed Craig Fournier.
Yep.
Doing great.
Paul?
You thought you were gonna skip.
Yeah. Not Neil.
Anything else? Hey, are we done?
I, I'm.
Please, no, don't fix that.
That's a very correct answer.
So we weigh on an official motion?
Yeah, you gotta do an official motion, Marlo.
I move that we elect, um, Craig Fournier as chair.
I second.
Alan Kaver, raise your hand.
Aye.
The analysts.
You are now a chair.
All right, well, thank you for your confidence. I, uh, I'm not a, I'm not, um, I'd say I've, I've half made mistakes in the past, and I'll, I'll own up to those, okay?
We, we all do that, daily.
Hourly, sometimes.
We're all human.
Yeah.
That's right.
I just wanna say, you know, if you have an issue or something, come talk to me.
Absolutely.
Um, okay.
And we thank you.
Yes.
Well, I, I kind of enjoy doing it.
Okay.
I hope you do.
Good.
Good.
Especially starting at six thirty.
That's right, yeah. And ending by six forty-five.
Just really lucky.
Okay. We have an appointment, so item number five, Mr. Kimball, regarding the scenic road bylaws, you're, you're up.
Okay.
There you go.
So I got a lot, and I can talk a lot, so, um, please, you know, try to bear with me, I do wanna make sure I, I say these things to get them on public record, though. So before I even start about talking about the, the scenic road stuff, I, I wanted to bring up the, which I believe is the last master plan for Webster, two thousand eighteen.
Yep.
Um, and some of the things that are in it.
For example, the, the, on page forty-four, issues, goals, and recommendations. Underlying issue relevant to historic and cultural resources is the threat that the town will lose track of its historical heritage by overrun rampant growth, lose its unique character, and become just a faceless part of urban sprawl. Development pressures, population growth, and the passage of time all serve to diminish individual and collective memories and to foster gradual disappearance or degradation of both tangible and intangible historic resources. Such losses will inevitably alter the character and culture of the town in ways contrary to the wishes of its residents as expressed by the community survey results. And that's the piece I wanna go to next, is the community survey results. This is the summary on page forty-five, says the purpose of historic preservation is to enrich contemporary life and culture by retaining historical assets and safeguarding them for the future. Often when people think of historic resources, they think of old, of one old handsome house, a cemetery, or a site of famous events. The historic resources of Webster are much broader than individual buildings or sites. Historic encompasses space as well as buildings, and that's the issue that I wanna talk about. The term includes farms, barns, churches, towns, centers, and streetscapes. Again, that's the key word in there, streetscapes are important to the historic piece. The last part says historic, this is on page forty-six, historic resources are among a community's most significant and fragile assets. They give character and memory to a place. They are easily violated, blighted, or destroyed by any development that is insensitive to their importance. Webster should actively ensure that its historic and cultural resources are protected, enhanced, which is the key word I wanna talk about tonight, too. Enhanced, maintained, and preserved. So again, some keywords in there, streetscapes, enhanced, maintained, and preserved. So this is, this is the piece of the, of the, you know, community survey that comes next, and it says several of Webster's gravel roads are identified as scenic roads, this is page forty-seven. Mutton Road, Garrish Road, and Bashan Hollow Road, these are protected under state statutes, which I'd like to talk a little bit about tonight. Protecting scenic roads was rated very important, or somewhat important, by seventy-three percent of the surveyed respondents. That's three quarters of the town who feels scenic roads are pretty important. Maintaining the gravel roads and those with scenic attributes will be further, will further enhance the character of this community. And I think that's important to hear from our own community with the, with the master plan here. Again, scenic roads, enhanced, maintained, um, that's just a part I wanna start with. Last meeting that was here, again, I appreciate being invited to it, I want to recap some stuff that we talked about. I was asked to contact Unitil, I did, um, and I spoke to, uh, Chris Multrup, who's the manager of forestry operations from Unitil. Um, and we looked at the trees that he had marked. I totally agree with those trees that he marked, there are, a lot of them are ash trees, you know, that those, that those are dying, the Emerald Ash Bore. And when I met him, I met him actually near our barn, and I did it on purpose, uh, because there were a few trees that I thought he still could have marked. Uh, there's a poplar that was all dead, and I thought, I said, hey, geez, that one's dead, too, can we mark that? He agreed. Um, there's a, a very big oak that's leaning over the side of the road, that's all rotten in the middle, probably a hundred fifty-year-old oak, but it's, it's all rotted, and I said, can we take that one, too? Uh, again, these trees are on, on our property, um, so he said absolutely. Well, I was mentioning, yeah.
Were they, which side of the stone wall were they?
Um, they're on the interior part of the road, on, in, within the, within the stone walls.
Within the stone wall, okay.
Wait, I, I just wanna understand, you mean, are they on the roadside of the stone wall, or your side?
The roadside.
Okay, that's, that's.
Which, which, uh, your, your point is saying, you, or your side, the roadside is my side.
Yep.
They're both my sides.
Yeah.
Um, and I, I, there was some paperwork that I gave to each of you that, that I'll get to that will indicate that, too. So, um, so we talked about that, um, and then I asked him if there was a program that Unitil had, because, uh, you know, there's so many trees being taken, that I didn't know if Unitil had a program that could, uh, replace trees. Especially on scenic road, if there's a lot of trees going down, is there any program? He said, yes, there was. Uh, I asked him about that, he gave me the email, uh, it's part of the Arbor Day Foundation, so I asked him how many trees I could have, he said five. I said, what kind of trees are they? He said, you can take your pick. I said, are there sugar maples, 'cause that's kind of what I'd like to plan on planting? He said, there are. I contacted the Arbor Day, and they are going to deliver five, uh, sugar maples, good-sized sugar maples, for, for me to plant. I, of course, asked him, I said, does Unitil have any problem where I plant these? He said, well, if, you know, if you're planting under the lines, we would, why you plant them under the lines, because eventually they're going to be in our way, so if you plant under the lines, please plant, plant something under the, you know, on, near the lines, like a crabapple tree or something. Some of the trees are on the opposite side of the road of the lines. So I asked him, I said, well, you know, does Unitil have any problem, right? He said, as far as we know, as long as you're not planting the trees in the middle of the road, which is the traveled way, which is the law, that you should not interfere with the traveled way, but plant them where you want, just don't plant them in the traveled way, which again, speaks to the law. So that was, that was good, uh, of course, as soon as I heard that, you know, I, I thought of two things. For one, making sure that I come back to the planning board to make sure that, that you're all in agreement, and we have a good plan for me to plant these trees. Uh, and secondly, and again, I don't wanna talk for too long, but, you know, I'm, I'm, I teach social studies and history and so forth. This town has a long record of planting sugar maples, especially on the side of the road. We have forty or fifty up, up near the Becker slash Mock Farm area on Mutton Road right now. They're amazing trees, in fact, I asked him about them, and we went up and looked at them real quick. Those are between two hundred to three hundred years old. We're talking eighteen twenty-three, some of those were planted. Right around, probably when it started to call Mutton Road, maybe, and there was all sheep, in fact, all sheep, in New Hampshire. So pretty historic, uh, you know, places like Allen Road.
Little Hill Road.
Little Hill Road, Tyler Road. Sometimes you find them where you don't even think you're gonna find them. In fact, if you just drive down this road just a little bit here on Battle Street, you're gonna find the big ones on the side of the road, just on, on Battle Street, Pleasant Street. You know, the, people planted those out there on purpose, I'm sure with approval as well. So, um, I just wanted to, to go over quickly the, the pieces of paper that I, I have put before you. Uh, the first one is twenty-two thirty-one, one fifty-eight, effective designation as scenic road, I highlighted some things here, um, to just talk about specifically. This one is, um, number four, designation of a road as a scenic road shall not affect the rights of any landowner with respect to work on his own property. So, you know, that's, I think that's pretty self-telling there, that because it's designated as a scenic road, doesn't mean that I give up any rights to my property. And then there was some discussion a while ago about, you know, where, where is, where is my property? What is my property? Uh, so the second was taken from, and we talked about this a little bit before the meeting started, uh, Hard Road to Travel, they've just come out with their new edition, two thousand twenty-two.
It's a book from, over on the table, it's from New Hampshire Municipal Assembly.
And the book.
Less, a lot of cases, uh.
Case law.
Case law.
And again, the book that you have is two thousand fifteen.
Yeah.
I'm quoting from the two thousand twenty-two edition, which has been updated. And the part that I highlighted here says that land fronting a road includes half the roadway. Presumption against public ownership under roads is so strong that even when a landowner's deed has a meets and bounds description that does not include the highway, or that recites the nearest highway boundary line as the lost boundary line, it is still held to convey title to the center of the highway. So I wanna be clear that my, my land goes on the other side of the stone wall to the center of the road. And I think that's an important piece there, that there is a right of way that the town has, but it's mainly through my approval. Uh, that's how the roads were, the history of roads, so to speak. Uh, modern municipalities often want to preserve roadside treats, I think that's a great statement on page twenty. Preserving treats, is this possible in light of more in case? In the case of highway, highways, the butters almost always own the rights of way and the treats. So again, the butters almost always own the rights of way and the treats, subject to municipality's transportation easement to maintain a public road over the land. This means that landowners generally have a right to grow, maintain, or cut down their trees as they see fit. Again, key words here, growing trees and maintaining them. They also have a right to not have their trees pruned or removed without their consent, except pursuant to statutory, uh, explained below. The piece below is not that statutory piece, though. But as noted above, this is page twenty-two, but as noted above, RSA twenty-three one fifty provides that shade and fruit trees that have been set out or marked by the budding landowners, and, and young trees standing at a proper distance from the highway. So this sounds like trees that were not planted by me, but other trees that are there still, that are young, um, shall be preserved, as well as banks and hedges of bushes that serve as protection of the highway, or that add to the beauty of the roadside. This next part is, uh, from the city of Lebanon. I did a lot of research about how other towns and cities, um, do their scenic, um, rules for their towns. I was pretty impressed with a lot of towns, and I can probably give you some of that paperwork as well. Many towns have on their website, uh, some very good things for scenic roads. You know, when we get to our website, we have all these buttons to push, and all these things to look, and boards to review and so forth, on their websites, they have one specifically for scenic roads, um, with their rules. Even if it's just the state rules, which I believe that this town is abiding by at this point, we're just going, we're just using the straight state rules, even towns that have that are just putting that on there. There's also a, a piece of the law that says annually you have to declare what your, uh, scenic roads are, and be able to have them relate to a map, which I think we kind of do, it's, it's in the, it's in the, um, piece I just read, the master plan, but that's the only place I ever see mentioned our scenic roads, it's in the master plan.
I believe it's in our tax maps as well.
Yeah. But as far as written somewhere, that has to be written somewhere, and then referred to, being able to see it on the tax maps. So I think we have that, but again, it might be nice to have a piece of our website that kind of shows and does a, a nice job like other towns do, just throwing that out there for you. This is the city of Lebanon's. Uh, it looks like they have modified theirs and added things to theirs, but I just wanna put this piece out there for you and tell you what other towns are doing here. This is Lebanon, the purpose of this chapter is to maintain the character of the landscape along the city's highways, and promote the visible natural and historic features along rural roads. So they're going and expressly saying what their, their, you know, scenic road laws are, and, and actually promoting them here. The next part is the next piece here, which is interesting. The public works department may trim and prune trees, cut shrubs, vegetation, and other, other natural or man-made instructions from within three feet of the edge of the main traveled portion of the road. And I found that interesting, that, well, the city of Lebanon's a pretty big city, and they have, do have a bunch of scenic roads, and they're putting in their bylaws that three feet is enough space, um, you know, to trim vegetation. Again, the traveled, everything that I'm reading says it's, it's about the traveled way. If something is interfering with the traveled way, as far as the town is, if it's interfering, feel free to take care of it. If it's not interfering with the traveled way, then leave it alone, it's a scenic road. The design, the next part is the designation of a scenic, of a road as scenic shall not affect the rights of an abiding landowner as to planting trees in the right of way pursuant to RSA thirty-one fifty-two, and the landowner's rights in those trees as provided in RSA, chapter two thirty-one. Again, the landowner planting trees in the right of way. That's, that's, uh, again, RSA thirty-one fifty-two. That's what I have here, uh, tonight to, to sort of read, and I, so I guess the big piece was, at the end of the last meeting, we talked about, um, you know, adding to our scenic road bylaws. At this point, reading what the laws are, I don't, I don't necessarily feel that we need to go that route, and I know Russell instructed me of, of how to do that, but with all of this information and data, I kind of feel like there's a lot of laws and information that help the landowner plant trees on their land in, in the right way. So I guess what I'm asking and, and, and hoping that you can brainstorm with me is, how do we do this successfully as a town with landowners such as myself, to make sure it's successful?
Is there any comments?
You're always looking at me.
Yeah, well, I, I got one, the first thing off the gate is, it's all well and good to go put a new tree in, okay? But say you got the canopies, you know, you, you, to get like what I did up the street, up by you, you know, we left those maples, the only way they're gonna grow is to get sunlight. And if you, I don't know what you have for a plan, but if you're trying to replace the ones that they're gonna cut, you got too much canopy hanging over the road, like, and, and they're not gonna grow. They're gonna get right up to the limbs of those other trees, and it's over. And that is a guarantee, I'll guarantee you that.
The damage is gonna grow out.
Out and start leaning into the road.
I doubt, I value your opinion, Addie.
Yep.
Um, but as you also know, I'm allowed to cut trees.
Yeah, I.
So if, if I'm.
That's why I did what I did.
If I'm going to cut trees to allow, you know, those trees to grow in a proper way.
Yep.
I think they'll be successful.
Yeah.
Again, you know, the traveled way sometimes is, is a, is the big piece, again, what I've been saying over and over, and I agree with you, the traveled way is not just where the vehicles are on the road, it's above them as well.
Right.
And if the town, if, if the town feels that there's anything up there that's interfering with the traveled way, they could certainly come to the landowner, ask permission to trim those, and it'd probably be okay.
Yeah, but let's, let's, uh, let's go back a little bit to that, say like if I drive down through there with a chip box, and all of a sudden it's blowing the limbs off, what's that, what happens then? And that will happen, that, that's.
Well, I think, I think like you said, if, if you, if the town, or somebody in the town feels that limbs hanging over the road are, are a problem, and they're in the traveled way.
Yep.
Then the proper etiquette would be to go to the landowner, who owns those trees, and say, hey, those, we, the town feels those are in the traveled way, could we trim those? And if they were my trees, if you're asking me, I'd say.
Yeah.
If you don't wanna swear, hell, yeah.
But. But the, like, right now, I mean, even going, and I'm not trying to be mean.
No, I, I understand your argument.
But, but it's like, you know, you need some sunlight on that road.
Right.
'Cause mud season, me as a taxpayer, Paul's a taxpayer, all the rest of us, we're hauling stone up there to fix it so people can get to their house.
Right.
Where, when you hit where I cut up to Becker's, that's dry as a bone.
Yeah.
Granted, like, you know, that's cut, I cut that, but it looks, it's field, we stumped it, it looks nice, and that road dries out, Allen Road, same thing. And a perfect example of that is, is the piece of land that I own over there, I left the maple trees, nice maples, soon as you get to the other end of it, where it's shaded in, it's mud, and it's still wet.
Yeah.
You know, and, and, and Mutton Road just barely dried out. So, I mean, to, so, I, I, I don't have a problem with you, with you planting them, but it's like you, it needs to be opened up a little bit more, there's a lot of silver birch up there that's that size, it's dead.
Yeah.
It's like, you know, it wouldn't hurt to peel that stuff off.
Like I said.
Where you fought, your brother is, it looks nice with the big trees, that looks awesome, you know?
I mean, I, I guess that's the hope, is that, is that by planting some trees and having Unitil take out, what'd you say, fifteen trees?
It's about fifteen.
I mean, we're gonna take out fifteen trees, so hopefully it opens up some space for the other trees to grow already.
Yeah. But I mean, if you were really looking to make it look scenic, you could take, and I know you probably don't wanna cut them, but it would make that road look really nice.
Yeah.
If you took all that junk out of there, and that, and left all your big trees, it would look, it would look nice.
Well, I mean, Addie, I appreciate your opinions, um, but what you think is junk, somebody else who thinks scenic, and what you think is scenic, somebody else might, might think the absolute opposite of what you're thinking.
That's, that's fine.
Do we have some other comments?
What about plowing? Does the town maintain those roads in the winter time?
Great que, great question, and I, and I've been kind of prepared for this one as well.
Okay.
You know, we've, we've been on Mutton Road for quite some time, and Addie's talking about it being muddy and so forth.
Yeah, yeah.
It was muddy before the rock, you know, we, they, our, we've had seven or eight road agents, I think, since we've been on the road.
Oh, wow.
Uh, and they've all done a, a damn good job of maintaining the road.
Yeah.
And it's something, dirt roads are not easy to maintain, and they've done a great job. And we know that they, are they continually needing maintenance, they continually need rock, they continue to need dirt, uh, and that's just something that goes along with being a scenic road.
Where'd that plow?
Plowing. So I took a drive around Webster. And there are thousands of telephone poles within a foot, two, three feet from the road. There's thousands of trees that are within a few feet of the road, there's thousands of rocks, and mailboxes, and on and on and on and on and on. So I think, very much like Lebanon, uh, I think, you know, that, that you need an amount of space to put snow, um, but we've never had a problem on Mutton Road with anybody putting snow anywhere when they plow it, again, they've been plowing it when the road was half the size it is now.
I'm looking at the, the three-foot, uh, measurement that you brought up here, and I'm thinking when a plow goes through, it needs to push it back 'cause another storm's coming.
Yeah.
Isn't that more than three feet? The shelf as well as plowing?
I, I guess it is, but my question to you would be, if we took a ride around Webster right now.
But we're not talking about the rest of Webster.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so let's not go down a rabbit hole, if, if you don't mind me speaking up on that.
Sure.
But, um, we're worried about this one area, the other issue that I'm concerned about, I mean, I love the trees, I love the foliage, I, I do. I just feel that they shouldn't be that close to the road. The other issue is roots, roots do have a habit of rising up and bumping up the road, and causing more issues. And again, I love trees.
Yeah.
Uh, they just, they took a whole bunch down in front of my house, and it's a sandbank, you know, it's gonna be pretty to go make it long, but, um, in any case, those are my two concerns. One is the snow, you need to not just be able to plow the snow, like, we have a large storm coming, they need to be able to bank it back. And the other is the root, you know, if the roots, if the tree's too close to the road, a lot of times the, the roots will grow.
Yeah.
And cause problems down the road.
Absolutely, and again, I, I don't mean to insult you.
That's okay, go ahead.
Please take a ride up Mutton Road and look at one of the trees that is two hundred and fifty years old, it's this big.
Aren't they beautiful?
Where the dirt is right here in the traveled way, and the tree is right here.
I know.
There's never been a problem with roots in that, never. And the other problem, the other issue is, that tree's been there for that long, and we've been plowing the road forever, so it has not caused any problems with plowing the road.
My question is, I'm not sure why, what is your, what is your fear? I mean, I, I, I don't see that anything you've said goes against what's going on anyway, so I guess, I'm not sure.
Thank you, and again, that was my, my question to you, was, how can we do this successfully, and do you have any, do you have any tips for me? For example, uh, it mentions in here marking the trees that you plant. I mean, my, the, the issue would be, is, is the road maintenance, uh, going to be a problem or an issue with the trees that I'm allowed to plant on my property? By statute, by law, I can plant these trees. Again, my issue is, how do we do this successfully without those trees getting, um, ruined in any way?
That's, uh, my, first of all, I wanna say thank you for, um, looking at the, uh, at the town plan, and all you've said about the value of scenic roads and trees. It rings, it rings true, I think, you know, we all appreciate the trees.
Yeah, absolutely.
The, the, I don't have any issue against you planting trees there, the only thing I would take issue, or not issue with, or concern, is that the road agent know and approve of where you're gonna put them, and that they know, not only the current road agent, but subsequent road agents.
Sure.
Know that those trees have been planted, and that they should just, um, action.
Yeah. Can I ask you this question? Is there anything in the law or statute that says I have to have the road agent's approval to where I wanna put my trees on my land?
Uh, no, there isn't, as far as I know, but.
Are you saying approval, or are you just trying to say, you're saying how can we successfully make this happen?
Right.
Which, I'm, I'm all.
I'm okay with conferring with the road agent.
Yeah, right, is that what you meant?
Yeah, I just, I just, I want the road agent involved in this whole question.
Only because that way it doesn't, like he's pointing out, it's been discussed, he knows that, you know, those trees you planted, and, you know, try to be aware of them. He knows that you, those trees you planted and, you know, try to be aware of them.
I guess, are you worried about, for example, along our road, I know we have some great maples. But of course, every so many years, they do come along with the, that sidearm mower.
Yes.
And sort of clean up, and in general, what they're cleaning up are the little suckers.
Yes. Saplings, yes, saplings.
And that allows the the big trees to continue, is that, is that what things you're worried about?
I I would be concerned about that, I would be concerned about, again, the the road maintenance, um, injuring these trees anyway.
Yeah, and and I think that's a discussion that you should have, not only with you, but with the road agents, subsequent road agents. You know, that they're okay with this tree, that they're not gonna, they're not gonna trash it, that.
They know you planted it on purpose, it didn't just.
Right, and again, I'm wondering, again, just thinking aloud, is there a way to mark these trees to make it easier for the road agent? I mean, if I'm the road agent, I'm doing, trying to do my thing, and I just see a thing planted there, I don't know, like, is there a way that we can?
Yeah, if I were you, I'd put stakes there, put some flagging on it.
I mean, what do you suggest? I mean, do you have a suggestion?
I I don't, I'm kind of hoping that this would be a brainstorming piece to make sure that this can be done successfully.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Simple question.
Sure.
Why do you want the trees so close to the road?
Well, I I actually haven't decided.
I'm just curious.
I I haven't decided where to plant them, actually. I mean, I I'm not saying I'm gonna plant them right next to the road or three feet or five feet, I. Addie knows this, the the sun dictates a lot, places, the soil dictates a lot, the the water runoff dictates a lot. I just wanna make sure that I that I have the approval, you know, and not the approval, but the discussion about whether, you know, to make sure this is successful, so when I do plant them and I decide where do I wanna plant them, that this goes well and this does not become a, I'm planting trees and all of a sudden I plant five trees and then they're been knocked down by a by a snowplow or by a grader or by road maintenance cutting saplings or by.
Just, just as Unitel, you know, had you had a discussion with Unitel.
Sure.
You should have a discussion with the road agent before you plant the trees.
I will, I will definitely do that.
I'd say if you have them out of the ditch line, you know, don't get them right next to the ditch line. Get them back far enough, I don't think it probably wouldn't have an issue.
I would love to have that conversation, I'm hoping somebody, at least one person from the board, would have that conversation with our current road agent and maybe if the road agent is ever replaced with the next road agent, just to make sure they're aware. Somehow, or we can broach that if we get to know the road agent someday, but, um, you know, because it's, sugar maples, they don't grow real fast.
No.
So.
But they do grow.
Yeah.
When they, when they get sunlight, they take off, that's, that's.
And again, I'm I'm talking, I'm talking a lot, but I had a conversation with my son before.
Yeah.
And I said, these, these trees in town are two hundred and fifty years old.
They're beautiful.
They're going to go sometime, and wouldn't it be neat if we had a program? Or again, master plan or something else to inspire people and encourage people, as we've heard in a lot of these places, enhance and encourage people to plant more sugar maples in this town so that my great grandchildren will see these things as well. You know, I just think that's a nice thing to do for the town.
See, the only problem today is you have way more traffic than you did two hundred years ago, and and when you drive on the root of a tree, that's over, that kills it. That's like it's, I mean, I could take you out into a forest that I logged forty years ago and it will show right on that skid road, those pine trees, they look healthy, till you cut them down, they're red rotten. The reason why it is, you drove on that root system. And so, you know, you you gotta, if like my maples that I have on my lawn, I wa- I had, I lost one last year, I cut one just this spring and I got another one that needs to go and those things are.
Yeah, you'll find, I think, I think the advantage is this, and I think this gets maybe to your root question. Trees are pretty smart. And that that the roots of these new trees are not going, and they're not gonna be encouraged to go to places where they're going to be damaged. And since there's so much traffic on the road, the roots probably aren't gonna wanna be going to places where they're gonna be injured. Trees are smarter than you think, so I would, I would bet that a lot of these roots on these trees, when they get planted, are gonna be pretty solid.
Those trees tend, the roots tend to go with water, it's true.
That's it, absolutely, yeah, which is hopefully, which is hopefully not in the road.
Water's in their ditch, that's where the tree roots are going to go in that ditch.
Let's hope so, let's hope they don't.
The grader and ruin that.
Well, well, the grader should be grading the road and not, you know.
Yeah, but you have.
Five, five feet off the road.
You gotta clean the ditch out so your water runs, you know that.
Yep.
So that's something that I would wanna see if you were gonna put them in, just to make sure that they're back.
Then I can care with the ditch.
And it would be nice, I mean, to, I know, I know you, what you think are good trees, what I do are different, but some of them nice, those are nasty silver birches, it'd be cool to see that stuff gone. There's a, there's a broken top off a couple of them maples up there now that would be good cordwood. And that would be a good spot for a nice tree.
I burn wood too, five quart a year, got no problem with it.
It would be good to see it, and that would make that road look real nice, you know? And it and it really would too, that dead stuff would just, it would be, be nice. And then if you put a new tree in, you you know, you open it up so it gets sunlight, it will grow. If you don't open it, it's not, it's not gonna do anything, I hate to say it.
Is there any more?
Sometimes, uh, dead trees are what makes the scenic road a scenic road.
Yeah, but you gotta have it too.
Yeah.
That one limb fall, you know, there's one limb up there right now on the right hand side. When you get down there halfway, that limb's probably a good twenty foot piece hanging. And somebody's gonna get that, hopefully it's not a kid on a bike and or something stupid, a motorcycle or, you know, sooner or later, it's coming down. And then the liability, who's liable if that hits somebody?
There's a lot of great information on that in those, uh, things I've been reading as well.
So does that go back to the landowner or the town?
I'm not saying.
Yeah, well, well, I I know, I know how.
It's in that book right over there though.
Yeah, but I, I, the good lawyer knows how that works. And if you knowingly, willing, knowing that you know that tree's dead, that will go back to you, that I can guarantee you.
Back to me personally?
Yes.
I think, I think you should read that book.
If you know that, if you know that you, you know that that tree is dead and you, and and that hits somebody, you will be liable for that.
Or is the town liable, Addie?
Hmm?
Or is the town liable?
Okay, so should the town be able to cut that tree down right now on a scenic road?
I mean, I can, I can read you the statutes if you wanna get, I, my, my, my reason for coming here tonight is is this issue, but I I think as a planning board, you should research that issue and read that issue. I can ca- I can give you the quick answer. If the town decides that there is a tree that is, that is harming the public way and it's an emergency, then you have the right to take it down, you should notify the landowner first, but you should take it down.
So he should get a hold of you and and ask you if he could cut it, is that what should happen?
I believe that's what the law is.
Okay, so.
I think he's right about that.
Yeah, so so that tree driving up there tonight to feed the cattle, I could see that that something needs to be done with that. You know, that way nobody gets hurt, don't get a broken windshield or whatever, so.
Is, is there any more discussion here?
No.
Have we done? Do you have any more further comments?
I have about half an hour more. I know I took a long time and I appreciate it.
No, I appreciate it.
It's an interesting.
So just to make sure that that we have a final summary, I'll speak to Emmett Bean about planting trees and somebody from the board will have a discussion as well, um, with Emmett.
And ask him about the one hanging. You drive down past where your son's place is, it's right there, you can't miss it.
You can ask him.
I will. You don't want.
It doesn't, it doesn't bother me, so if it bothers you, then go for it.
Well, I I'm just thinking if that came down through somebody's windshield, I mean, the thing's that big and it's hanging right, it's, you can't miss it.
We should probably evaluate all of these trees on all of our roads, I'm sure there's a lot of them out there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No doubt.
And some we don't even know.
Yeah.
You know, when you cut into a tree and it's stuck.
So I'm not, I'm not sure, was that a yes for the summary part? I will speak to.
Well, it sounds like, I mean, the next item is is scheduling a public hearing about the, uh, road with with Emmett, right? About that, so that's obviously the perfect time to talk about it.
Do you? That would be plans regarding tree trimming.
Item number six here, do you have a, can you?
Yeah, I can speak to it, Emmett wants to do some tree trimming on the two roads, which is Garrish and Bastion Hollow, I think.
Right.
He also wants to remove a few boulders that are getting in the way.
Yeah, and Garrish.
Yeah.
And, um, Bastion Hollow.
So part of the problem is Emmett usually is at a Capitol firefighter meeting the night we have planning board meetings.
That's right.
So I was hoping, considering we might be able to do it at a select board meeting, if the select board would be willing, cause we'd already have Marlo there, so we'd only need two other board members and then we could get it done.
Yeah, I, I.
Wouldn't it, I, I.
Monday nights.
Monday nights?
Monday nights, we couldn't do it on the first because we don't have enough time to post it. So it would have to be in the second meeting in the month, which I think is, I had this earlier and I totally forgot what the date is, I think it's the eighteenth, but I wanna make sure.
If not, we, I mean, a month away is not a big deal, is it, if it was the first, if there was, cause Emmett's here for department head on the.
That sounds about right. I mean, I thought it made more sense to do it on the department head too, but I don't know what Emmett's guideline is to get this work.
Oh, okay, right.
So I can give them both options and see what works best for him.
All right, then.
And let us know.
Let us know.
And let you know.
All right.
I just gotta make sure I have enough time to post the.
Is there public comment on that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, so I'm just curious about the scope of work again?
Well, Emmett's gonna explain his scope of work at the hearing.
Oh, okay, is that tonight?
I don't know.
No, no, the public hearing that we're gonna, we're trying to schedule.
Trying to schedule.
And it'll be at a selectman's meeting.
Okay.
Instead of, cause he can't.
Well, it'll be a joint meeting between the select.
And the planning board, okay.
Okay, so there can be a public comment at that time about what the scope of work is.
Yeah, absolutely, that's the reason having a public hearing.
Okay, item number seven, ZBA request for a joint meeting, um.
So, I don't know if it has to be specifically a joint meeting, but they're having, I don't know if anybody's read the breakout de Juula book case, I included it with the planning board stuff. So this is something the planning board discussed, I think it was two thousand and fifteen, was the last time he came in and he wanted to build the house on his lot, but the road's paper road and there was a lot of discussion that came out that the road was private and the town had no authority to grant him permission to build a road or get access across it. And the ZBA is hoping that some planning board members would be willing to show up at the next ZBA meeting when he's there to be able to put input on the discussion.
Where is this?
It's, um.
So if you go down, I don't, I don't wanna cite the lot, but the little lot with the shed on it and all the junk right past there, there appears to be a road going off from there.
Open in Pillsbury Lake area.
In the Pillsbury Lake area.
Okay.
That's the area we're talking about, but that road that you think is a road is not a road, it's somebody's driveway. The road would be on the other side of the telephone pole if it had been built, from my understanding of what the plan is.
Yeah, I think that's a, I'd certainly get that in there, that's a, you got that meeting.
Me too, me too.
Well, five nine twenty-three, I probably, my first grandchild's supposed to be born on the tenth, so that's the due date, so.
Wow, are you gonna be around?
That's exciting.
Well, she's, she's only in Portland, but I don't wanna commit to doing anything around that time with me.
Well, if you're, if you're around, it's good.
Yeah, if I'm around, I'll come.
If you're around, it was not, I don't, I don't think it needs to be a joint meeting, like, I don't think the planning boards could be making a decision at that.
As long as there are a few people present.
Few people present to be able to comment on it, because one of the concerns with the ZBA is this may end up coming into the planning board's department, say if you wanted to build the road as a private road, then it would have to go under review of the planning board in order to be built. At least that's my basic understanding.
Yeah, that that's the simple, that's the simple.
That's the simple version.
Oh, I.
Craig is correct on that one, it's the very simple version. It's more complicated.
A lot more complicated.
Oh, really?
Paul was around back then, so.
Yeah, that would be good to have Paul up there, he's been foot in that.
Yeah.
And I did talk to Sue Roth about it.
Coming back.
And she said she would try to make it, but she thinks she's gonna be out of town at that point.
All right, how about Lynn Marie?
I didn't get ahold of Lynn Marie yet.
So this would be on five nine, May ninth?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you know what time?
Um.
Six thirty or four?
Seven o'clock is their meetings, however, there's another case on the agenda, which I think will likely go first cause it's gonna be a lot quicker, and, um, so probably around seven thirty that would start.
So I'll be there anyway, right?
Yeah, I figured as much. That's a relevant case on the docket.
Is that the first one?
That's the first.
What is it?
Oh, he was going for a special exception to the setback requirements, that should go really quickly.
Hopefully.
I don't think any of the neighbors could complain, cause they're basically the only neighbor.
I got one other one, he's turned me into the DES two times, so don't hold your breath on that one.
All right.
Did do him any good.
Okay, uh, item eight, future zoning.
So that was for me, so one of the other things I wanted to adopt is if you look at our zoning ordinance, the page's numbers don't line up to where our articles are. And unfortunately, in order for me to change that, we need to do a warrant article.
I'm gonna do, wait a minute, if we're gonna do a warrant article, there's a few other things that we need to change.
Right, but I think this is a relatively easy change, it just allows me, the planning board, any future planning board member to not change anything in the ordinance, but you can change the page numbers so that they match, that's the whole principle of the warrant.
I'm, I mean, there's a few things we've already talked about, for example, setting a three year limit on the.
The rebuild or the impact fee thing?
Impact fee thing.
For a burned house?
That in there.
Yeah, that's a good idea too.
Um, I mean, if we're gonna touch this thing.
Fix it.
There's a few other, there's a few other things that need to go in there.
Right, I agree, but that was just the one that I was bringing up, because it, I think that's an easy.
That's an easy one.
That's an easy one, I mean, I'm assuming we would wanna do them separately, but.
Well, I mean, you make a list, you do this and this and this and this.
Yeah, if you put too many in there, they'll find something they won't, I can, you know, say no to the whole thing.
To the whole thing.
And there's, there's a man speaking from experience.
I suppose, I suppose Paul's got a point in the sense that the warrant article, the page, cause you wouldn't want somebody to look at it and think, well, that's overcome, you know, overregulated, I'm just gonna say no to it all. So you probably do wanna do like one warrant article with just the page changing, like, pretty sure people will be all right with that.
Cause it makes it easier for everybody, making sure that the table of contents matches.
I I think that each one that we might adjust should be its own warrant article, cause even I might be, or any of us may look at it as, you may have an opinion that this should be this way, and I may say, yeah, no, I don't think so, Craig. All right, no, just kidding, anyway, so so at least, at least when you're voting, if you have each warrant article, you can decide.
I'm with you.
Okay.
Okay, read it and go with it.
Well, there's another minor one I could think of, I wanna change the definition of junkyard in the groundwater protection ordinance to match the one that the state RSA, cause currently it wasn't.
Item number three.
Item number three, that's another one that I noticed.
Warrant article three, yeah.
So let's.
That'd be enough then.
Well, I think, I think, I think the driveway permitting needs to be looked at.
Well, that's different, that's separate.
That wouldn't be a warrant article?
No, it's a public hearing, so we can change your rules with a public hearing.
Good, glad you keep us in line.
There he does. This is why he gets the big bucks.
All right, now we got that all sorted out.
So what will we do next to come up with a couple, we'll have a discuss, put it on the agenda for next time to
Right.
have a couple discussions on some warrant, warrant articles that you'd like to have presented at next year, is that what?
Well, the first thing is we have to decide what the language of the warrant article will be, so what are we changing? So if you wanna change the definition of say junkyards to match the RSA, you gotta come up with the wording. This one, I already got the the warrant article straight from NHMA, so the wording's done. I only had to take out the building code part, cause we don't have a building code, and that's pretty much set. And then what was the other one that was suggested? The the limit for.
Yeah, the time.
The time limit for that, you'd have to come up with a wording of that, and then we would have to hold a public hearing, say around September, we would have to hold a public hearing, say, around September, allow people to come in and make comment on it, and then we could put it on the warrant, in the file, or the file, you know, for the town meeting.
So, after a fire, we, we figured three years is that, that's what we figured?
I mean, somebody could always apply for an exception, but that a reasonable time limit...
Time frame, three years.
Three years seems reasonable to me. I, we, well, we threw around several dates.
Yeah.
That's what I thought, too.
Three seems reasonable to me.
Three is what we figured on...
Yeah, that's what I remember.
Yeah.
And, and say this again, three years, that once, if, if you have something that burns down and you don't rebuild within the three-year period, you're gonna be subject to the impact fee.
Okay, so what if the piece of land changes hands, like that, what we just went through?
Well, you could add that exception in there too, so...
So, so if it sells, I mean, if it...
It doesn't matter if it changes.
We should put that down, so whatever, the landowner that owned the house when it burned...
I don't forget the impact fee.
Yes.
No, I think it, I don't think it matters if it changes hands, as long as that house gets rebuilt within three years, it doesn't matter who owns it.
Right, I wouldn't think so. By the owner of the land, I think it, what we're talking about is the owner of the land.
What, what was the purpose of the impact fee anyways?
Well, because there, every time you build, there's an increase in fire services.
Yeah.
School, schools, health and welfare, all that stuff, and that impact fee is...
Schools.
Yeah.
But you have your tax, you get already taxed on your property, and if you build, you, you're taxed, that property that was only worth, you know, thirty thousand, now is worth, let's say, two hundred and fifty thousand.
There's the, also the part of commercial impact fees too, which are...
People move in with ten kids, you know, all of a sudden you're impacting the schools.
Yeah, that you were.
Right.
Or if you...
Even one kid.
Yeah.
One kid, what?
I mean, we have it, I mean, we already have it on the book, so...
Right, and the other part of impact is the commercials, say, somebody puts in the